I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first I want to start by saying Happy New Year, welcome to 2013. At the last meeting, our board did adopt our schedule for the year, so our next meeting will be Tuesday, February 12th. We are not prepared at this point to hope to approve the minutes because I just got them on Friday, so we're not quite ready to approve those yet. But I do want to remind everybody, we are in the dead of winter at this point, that in the event that it should snow for next week's, next month's meeting, if town hall is closed, then this meeting will be canceled, and anything that's on that agenda would be just moved to the next agenda, would just get moved to the March meeting. So anybody who is here for a review, or if you have a public hearing that might continue to the next month, if it does snow on that date and town hall is closed, then we'll get moved to the March meeting. If not, if it's, if town hall is not closed, then the meeting will be on. All right, with that being said, let's get right into our agenda. We have one adjourned public hearing, we have two public hearings this evening, and then we'll get into the two new applications before us with reviews. So the first is an adjourned public hearing, Appeal 3609 Gomes.
It'll be me again.
Daniel Gomes, 219 Country Club Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a variance to be allowed to keep the existing swing set in front of the rear line of the dwelling and a nine-foot sideline variance pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
So moved.
Second, on favor? All right, since last we met.
Last we met, we got, I guess you guys wanted a measurement on the space in the backyard there for the swing set. I did some measurements from retaining wall to the back to the front lower retaining wall, it's 22 feet and a couple inches. The sides like 70 feet from side to side, you know, from their property line to like their deck on the property. The swing set physically could fit up there. The ground just would have to really be worked so it can make a level service, you know, a level surface, you know, to be seen. Now, what I did do is, I had a photographer show up over there, and they got pictures. I know the neighbor next door, Ms. Connington, and Mrs. Brennan, another concerned neighbor in the community, had some emails going around, concerned about the whole situation. So I did is I had the pictures taken with the swing set where it is now.
Okay.
And where the swing set would be moved, so you still see it when you drive up the road, going up into the community. Now, I also haven't put one with some screening in it. It's not exactly what it's gonna be, but it still hides the swing set, you know, to cover it, because they want to do it, they want it to be right here by the neighbors. I know it's huge, I know it's, you know, an eyesore, kind of, you say when you drive up there.
It's bright.
You know, but if they move it to the, if they move it to the rear, there's no screening. And she's gonna put blue mulch on there for, you know, to protect her child and whatnot. So, I mean, I recommend putting the screening up and leave the swing set where it is. You're not solving the situation. You're solving the situation because it's not supposed to-
Can we see our pictures?
It's not supposed to be there, you know, that's for the rules, but, you know, not gonna, uh-
Start with where it is now. As opposed to where it would be if it was moved back. Where it is now with some screening.
That's not exactly what the screening is, but, you know, I had the photographer put something so you can kind of see that, you know. I only had what the landscaper gave me the last time and-
Yeah, unfortunately, what you're not showing us is if you did move it back and you put some screening in the back, what you could do with it there.
Right, but she's not gonna put, if she has to move it, she's not putting screening in the back because it's allowed to be there, you know.
Right.
She's still gonna see the swing set from the side of her house, she's still gonna see, and she's gonna put mulch, more mulch back there as much as she can for the safety of her child. That's why I gave the pictures, you know, to, you know, you know, if it's where it is, she's gonna do screening, she'll change the color of the slides, she'll take the mulch out and put green mulch or whatever to aesthetically make it look good.
Did you get a sense of what the cost is going to be to level off that back area?
I did not get a cost for that, I did not. I was just, you know, she's gonna, if they, if you guys have to move it, you know, then hey, they have to move it, but, you know, people are still gonna see the thing when they drive up into that community on that road, you know.
As a matter of fact, we did get a letter in December from across the street neighbor, S. Ramelow, you heard him on the record? And the neighbor basically said that if it was screened, then he would have no problem with this.
Yeah, I got, I got a couple emails that were from people in the community saying that, you know, they kind of didn't want to see the eyesore, or, you know, didn't want to see the whole thing, if there were some trees to cover it, they were happy with that.
All right, thank you, Izzy, let me read this into the record, since we are in the public hearing. Dated December 6th, 2012, Dear Ms. Drummond, I am unable to attend the zoning board of appeals meeting on December 11th, 2012, but I would like to express my opinion, my house is directly across the street from the property where the homeowner is seeking a variance for an existing swing set. The homes in the community are very expensive and the established rules and regulations are necessary to maintain property value. But in my opinion, it would be less objectionable if the homeowner planted trees around the swing set to shield it from public view, and then it may be allowed to remain in the current location. However, I am not aware of the reason why the complaint against the swing, against the swing set was filed in the first place, and if warranted, the complainant's grievance should take precedence over my opinion. Signed, S. Ramelow. So, all right. Questions from board members?
I think screening is a good solution, I mean, I don't know.
Well, I mean, it's a partial solution, I mean, I guess the real issue is the immediate neighbor to the one. Si has complained about looking down at it as well, so I don't know. That's the issue.
They would still look down on it.
Yeah.
Barbara, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
They would still, they would still look down on it.
They would still look down, right. What kind of trees are in the back here, is that what you're proposing?
No, I did, I just, I asked the photographer, I said, "Since you moved it, could you please give me something in front of it?"
Just to propose something.
So I can kind of, because I didn't have one from before from the landscaper, so I just kind of wanted to present something. I know they're gonna be emerald green evervites is what you guys, or what the landscaper, I should say, wanted to put in there.
The trees behind it are already there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Are there deer in the neighborhood though?
I don't, it's such a steep, it's a steep slope there, I haven't, I haven't, I do see, I shouldn't say that. There are deer tracks that go along the snow up that side of the mountain, so I do see deer tracks. I'm just not over there all the time on there like every other day, checking on the house. But I know they do make, I know the landscaper was saying they make something that they can, they put on the trees so it kind of gets the deer away, you know, supposedly. You know, but I know she is willing to change the slide maybe to a green, because I know that's what the other slides are mostly in that community when you drive around. And she is, and she, and there is, and she will change the mulch for the neighbor, you know. She's willing to, you know, change it and, you know, make the neighbors happy.
If we're done with these pictures, would you like to see these pictures?
Yeah, I'd like to see where they're moving. Because as far as I go from the back of the house, I'd only be able to see it from my bedroom, not from the kitchen, in the living room. Yeah, I wouldn't look, I wouldn't be looking down at it, I'd be looking like this way at it, if I was moved back there.
I guess that's the question to you, is would you rather have the screening?
I'm willing to work with the neighbor, they screen it properly. I just don't want to scare them through the kitchen, my living room window. I mean, I don't, if it's screened properly and I don't have to look at it from the frame where I sit and from the road, like where you're still at in the back.
Right.
You wouldn't see it from the road. As you're coming up my driveway, you'd see it, but when you hit Ridgemont Country Club, that's what you see. It's on Big Hill.
Yeah, you wouldn't, if you come up a little more, then you start to see it, but you're right.
You start to see it on the hill main, but-
Yeah, yeah, when you start to come up the hill, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, past your house.
Right, right.
And just, can you just state your name out loud again for the record?
Right. So again, the landscaping that he's, or screening that he's proposing would be a thinner plant, or thinner bush, I guess?
I guess they're-
But it still gets huge.
They still get big, yeah, they still get big.
Three or four feet across.
They still get big. And I will personally, you know, after the meeting, I know I'm not gonna build them up, plant the trees right away. I will personally go and take the slides down, so you can't see the slides for, you know, a month or two till we get the trees up in there, if, if you guys, you know, say it's okay to leave it there and we put the screening in.
I don't know that you can plant our providing.
Right, I know, but I'm saying, you know, so she doesn't have to see it or whatnot. I'll go and I will personally this week go up there and take the slides down, so you don't see the yellow slides, because they do stand, stand out like a sore thumb.
When, if you were, if we were going to go with the arbivide, how tall are you going to be putting the initial plants? Obviously, you're not gonna go with a, I know they grow fairly quickly, but-
I don't know how much they, I don't know, I'm not a landscaper, so I don't know. I just know if the paperwork's there, do they say what's on there on the paperwork that we had in like two meetings ago? Is it on there in that paperwork? I know they're gonna stagger them, so, you know, they take up space, so you kind of don't see them.
Can you just give us pictures?
He doesn't, he doesn't have anything on there, the landscaper?
Messed backyards.
And it should have been from Neve Landscaping on there.
We can specify, you know, four or five feet of, um-
Yeah, because I'm concerned, I don't want, by the time they get, grow up big enough that they're actually providing appropriate screening, the child may not even be needing to place that anymore.
Right, right.
That's what I don't want, right? It's gotta be a reasonable size.
So you want like six foot, seven foot?
The diagrams that you gave us last time around, you know, show a nice size-
Okay.
-shrub, okay?
I, I don't know what they can transplant, I don't know how big a tree you can transplant-
Yeah, I know.
Before you transplant it and then it dies, I don't know. I mean, I can recommend to landscaper, what can we do to-
It's usually around five.
Five, six feet.
They can move a huge tree if you want to go to that extent.
Yeah, but we want, we want multiple numbers of them. You're not telling us how many you're giving us here, but you're, but you're showing up front and back.
I'm sure when they do it, she's gonna do privacy, you know, so you don't see it. I know she's gonna do, I know they're gonna do the right thing.
Again, for the neighbors' benefit, this is what we were given at the last meeting, I don't know that you had an opportunity to see this, but if you, what they're proposing is the arbivide but staggered, so there would actually be two rows of it, and, you know, the front row-
The swing sets behind that.
Yeah, behind that, so that's all you see is trees.
Wow, when the trees are tall enough that, you know.
So I mean, they probably have to be six feet to be effective.
To be effective, right.
But I know, I know like in this-
Everybody else in the house, aside in the houses have trees growing.
But that's, that's their choice to do, that's not mine.
Yeah. I mean, I think the benefit of this type of shrub is that it's gonna be a full one. And as opposed to, I worry that the evergreens that they have, eventually when they grow up, that underneath gets really scrubby and-
Get too close together, yeah.
Yeah, and you can start to see right through it again.
Because from my living room window, that's what you see if you look up this way and it's right in front. Up in the bedroom, it was put in the back where it could be flattened.
Right.
I still see it, but from the bedroom window, like you said, and you wouldn't see it coming up the road.
Right.
You don't, as you were coming up, passing my, you'd see it.
Okay, so the bottom line is, if it's appropriately screened, we change the blue mulch, they change the yellow slides.
I wouldn't ever see the blue mulch if it's properly screened.
Oh, that's true, okay, well, but, you know.
Doesn't matter what size.
Right, right, right.
You're right, you're right.
If it's properly screened, then I can see that.
Got it.
Okay.
How about the yellow slides?
If it's properly screened, I don't see it.
Okay.
So I guess the bottom line is the focus should be on screening rather than mulch and the slide.
Okay, yep.
All right, is there anything else you'd like to offer for comments?
No, then I don't need them to come down and take the swing set, how, swings the slide off to a proper screen.
Well, they actually, the slide company, the swing set company actually recommends it for the winter with the snow. So I actually, I wanted to do it because you do, you do see it, if you take the slide off, it actually visually looks better without the, the yellow slide on there. So it's, I think it's a couple bolts to take it off, so I will take it off, just to save the slide for the winter and then if the trees aren't tall enough, I think I'm gonna tell them to get the, the green slide and then see if they can trade the yellow slide in. I think it would just look nicer, that's my opinion.
Okay.
All right, so if it's properly screened, then that's not a problem.
The other thought I have is whether we could grant it for a period of years, or do we just wanna have this there forever?
Put a kid, a timeline or not, sure.
The only thing that worries me is, what if they have a kid five years from now?
Well, we could do like 15 years.
It could be renewable, but I mean, at least then you would have a little control over it to make sure.
Right, like a five-year renewal.
We set a precedent, that then everybody, that's my concern. If the neighbors don't have an objection, then I don't have any strong objection to keep it, other than we now keep making precedents for things that shouldn't be put there to begin with, be in there. So if we at least limit it to years, we can say, yeah, there's a special circumstance, the neighbors agreed it could stay there with proper screening, and that's why we allowed it.
Maybe 10 years is maximum?
They have to come back after 10 years or something, how, I don't know how, how old's the child now?
She's four.
I think 10 years is a little meaningless, I mean, did you say 10 years? I think that's, you know, probably a little too meaningless, I think if there's more regular review, three or five years, I think is the normal, almost special permits.
How old is her daughter, four?
Four, yeah, turning five in June.
Five years.
She's gonna use that place that for at least another five years.
Yeah, I'd say so.
Well, it's just a-
And again, this is, this is one child.
Right.
They may have another child.
There's no problem with them coming extended, but it just gives a review process. Or what you could do is if you're granted, you just say that in five years, the zoning administrator will do a review to make sure it's still in compliance, and if there's any issues or whatever, it will come back to the board.
I just don't see, who's gonna remember in five years? I mean, how do you, how do you put it, five years out?
I'd rather put the burden on the homeowner.
It sounds like we're issuing a special permit kind of thing.
Well, the way, the way, well, yeah, we could do, I don't have a problem with doing a review process. Obviously, if it, nobody ever complains, we'll never know it.
Right.
But if the house comes up for sale or something like that, it's gonna be there. Now they're gonna look to see if a variance was granted for it. The buyer buys it and the variance is expired, then that's where you get your review. And again, if somebody says, well, they have it, we pull the records, we'll say, no, they only got it for five years. Yeah, it's there for eight years, it's not supposed to be there.
And do you want to make a condition also, that what happens if they go now and excavate the yard for some other purposes and this is on the side? Not that they would, but-
Right, it's a significant expense to excavate that back area.
Yeah, but they might decide, you know, to make a bigger yard, different yard, put a patio out the back and they want lawn, and they would do the excavation for that.
All right, you know what?
Perhaps my suggestion is we can reserve decision, also come up with some reasonable ideas that we can put in the decision, and then we could, because they're not gonna do the plant, not anything.
Right, they're not gonna do a plant for about, you know, March or April unless, you know, snow goes away.
I mean, I think that makes the most sense, you don't have to come out again at this point, but I think it just, let's all just think about what makes the most sense in terms of, and if you can discuss with your client, just as, if there's a five years, eight years, whatever, just makes the most sense, all right?
Okay, yep.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak for or against Daniel Gomes, Country Club Road, the swing set variance? Yeah? All right, so do I have a motion to close the public hearing and reserve decision for the next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Can we have these for the file?
Yeah, you can keep that, yep. And then just, you'll call me next month, I guess, obviously, or whatnot?
After we pass, after we approve the decision, then you'll, the decision goes out within five days.
Well, you're certainly welcome to be here if you want to.
Yeah, you're welcome to be here, but you don't have to be here.
Okay.
Yeah, we have 62 days to make the decision, either next meeting or the following meeting, I do not know how many days.
So I don't need to be here?
No, it'll be automatically, most probably it'll be at the next meeting.
All right.
Probability of it being at the next meeting is high.
All right, item number two, public hearing, Appeal 3613 Schneider, I'm sorry, Schneider. John Schneider, 14 Piercehour Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a variance to be allowed to keep a 960 square foot fabric garage to be relocated so that it meets the required setbacks pursuant to Section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so you're, all right, let's restate here for the record what you are requesting to do. You, because we've all visited this property before. You have currently on your property three different structures in addition to your house. There's one, a canvas or fabric structure that's in the front area, that it does meet all the required setbacks. Next to that, you have a red shed, if I remember, red and white shed. And then behind this is an additional structure that's very large, and it's a corner of that-
Yeah, the back corner is seven, yeah.
Canvas structure encroaches on the setback, okay, then that's, and so that's why you're here. We did have, reviewed this once before when you were requesting approval for a shed, but it was determined that the use of that at that time was really more motorized vehicles, your boats, trailers.
That's what they told when I applied for the permit for it, that's what I was told to apply for a permit for, is a shed, so.
Okay. But again, what you told us at the time was what it was actually being used for. So now you're back requesting use of this structure as a garage, because it is a detached garage, you run into the issue that it exceeds the 60% of the square footage of the footprint here of your home.
Right, and the reason that it was turned down for the zoning, for the setback, is because of the size of it.
No.
That's the way I read it.
No, that's not.
No, the reason it was turned down, because you were requesting a shed and the use of the structure itself really does not sound like it was a shed. You had represented to us that it was more the boats, the trailers, more motorized vehicles that were going in there. So that's why we said it, it sounded like it was a garage and not a shed, so.
Well, the permit said shed because that's what, they didn't have any permits for those canopy-type garages, sheds or whatever. So I was instructed to fill out a permit for a shed, so that's why I went with that.
Okay.
But I got a letter-
Now the issue is that it's too big. If even if, if even if you do move it within the setbacks, which is what you're proposing, if you do move it within setbacks, it is large.
Well, I was actually hoping to be able to keep the size and then try to get the variance so I didn't have to move it. Because the letter I wrote, or the letter I read said that it was denied due, because of the size of it.
That was just one of the concerns that we had raised. Ultimately, the reason this board denied it was because it was not a shed.
Okay.
It was determined by this board that it was, that your use was not a shed. So, all right, so you're back to you don't want to move it, we've already decided you couldn't.
I, I thought it was because the size of it, that I had to get a variance for the size of it first.
All right, hold on.
And-
Usually we don't break it up that way. If you have an existing structure and it's too close to the property line and it's too big, you would request a variance for both those things at the same time.
Yeah, briefly state your reason for appeal, for existing 960 square foot tent fabric garage larger than 750 square feet.
And you indicating that you're gonna move it to 25 feet in from the property?
I didn't want, I didn't want to do that at all, actually, but-
But you marked it on your service as 2B 25 feet.
And on your short environmental assessment form, you're like to move it and keep it.
Okay.
So unless you didn't fill this out.
No, I filled it out, I just got lost somewhere along the line there, I guess.
Yeah, you're, you're-
Because I mean, I would rather take down the other one completely and leave that one where it is. I mean, if that would help, any matters, I don't know if it would or not, but I've recently got rid of a boat and two trailers, so if I could eliminate one to kind of keep the other one without-
Well, how big is the other?
Because it's gonna be very expensive to move it and make it smaller, because they don't, if I make it smaller, it's gonna be an eyesore, like unbelievable, because I called the company and they said they don't recommend it, they're, they're gonna void the warranty, and it's gonna look bad, because what it's gonna look like is like pulling your sleeve over your hand and folding it over, like a badly wrapped Christmas present, and-
How big is this other one you're talking about, you've rid of?
The, the, the other one that's there is 32 by 14, and I would be, love it if I can kind of take that one down and kind of-
Maybe you take the bigger one down and keep that one.
Well, that's what I was trying to avoid, because the other one, the other one I have more invested in it, and it's gonna be a lot harder to take down, and-
All right, so let's talk-
I haven't even paid for it yet, so.
At our last public hearing related to your previous application, you had told us, again, because we had many, many, many complaints and comments from neighbors, et cetera, that you-
One neighbor.
No, 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 there were additional, there were additional concerns that were raised. People were telling us that you were doing work in there, people were telling us that you were in there at all hours doing, you know, what, what you-
Completely false.
Now, you represented to us that the, what was the floor in there?
Concrete.
Concrete, what kind of concrete?
Concrete.
Okay, you had represented to us at the last public hearing that it was actually pieces of broken up sidewalks.
That's the other one, that's the other one.
That's the other one, that's, okay, that's not what was represented.
That's the other one that I want to take, that was gonna take down. And the noise and all that business is coming from Ryan Road that people are complaining about. I don't know, I can sit there and hear it at four, five in the morning, I can hear fans going, I can hear stamping machines going, I can hear people working at four, five in the morning, it's not me. I mean, I don't understand.
Can you tell us if this is the inside of your shed?
Yep, yep.
Because this picture's been provided to us.
Somebody was trespassing and took the picture.
So this looks to me like it's welding equipment.
It is, that's what I, I used to have in my shop.
What you used to have in your shop?
I used to have a shop, yeah. Actually, I rent another shop now in Yonkers.
This equipment is no longer there?
No, I, that's, that's why I can't get rid of it, because if I uncover all that equipment, it's gonna be useless. It's $100,000 worth of equipment, and I'm presently putting up a garage somewhere else where I'm gonna move all that stuff eventually, so.
So this equipment right now, the equipment in this photograph is still at the same location?
Yeah, yep.
I mean, I see a mask.
Yeah, all my tools.
I see wires running across here.
I have a-
Yeah.
Is it 110 or 220 or 220, 270, three-phase or single-phase? Because you've got some heavy duty equipment up there.
Yeah, I run it off a welder out of my truck, I have three pha, not three phases, 220 on my welding machine, I have a 300 amp welder. And when I need lights or something in there, I have a big heavy cord that I run from my generator outlet down to, down to there.
You have a generator on your truck, is that what you're saying?
I have a welder generator, 300 amps, welder, 10,000.
These are pretty big welders here, the Moller Electric too on this cord.
Yeah, they're, they're also, they also create their own energy, they're, I can't think of the name of it. Yeah, you, you put in, you plug them into 220, but it doesn't draw as much, it's a, it's called an inverter type of piece of equipment. But that's-
So this structure has a poured concrete floor, which I agree is gonna be very difficult to move, okay? But it does appear that there's welding equipment that is still being used.
I take it, I-
I mean, there's wires that are plugged in here, I mean, that's not telling me that the equipment's just being stored there.
Yeah, I go in there, I've worked on my own vehicle in there, I've worked on my lawnmower in there. I mean, I have snowmobiles, I've thrown my boat in there, I mean, I do work on stuff, play around with, but I do, I have a shop in Yonkers and I have one over in La Grange that I use. And by this time next year, that stuff's not even, nothing will be- And by this time next year, that stuff's not even, nothing will be in there, it'll all be gone.
Again, you're getting rid of everything, why do you need such a big building?
Well, I.
The other, the other shed sounds like it's pretty much empty, you got rid of two trailers.
But it's.
Got rid of your boat.
Yeah.
This stuff can easily fit into a shed that size.
There, there was still a trailer in the, on the property yesterday, there was, you're, I was looking at, yeah, I just drove by yesterday just to see whether anybody, whether there was a.
Did you notice the trailer that was missing?
I noticed, well, I noticed there was a big trailer on the side of your house that was covered with snow.
That's.
Alright, so.
That's one of the, I mean, I, I get from you guys that, oh, there's still this trailer here, but I've moved, I've got rid of.
No, no, no.
Two, two big trailers, another trailer, and no one says, oh, well, you gotten rid of this stuff, you know, every time I.
I'm saying you got rid of it, so why do you need the buildings?
You know, well, I still have stuff that I need, need to keep undercover.
What I was looking for was to see whether there were tracks back and forth that you were using this, this time of year as a garage, okay? That's what I was just trying to get a sense of. Is it being used now as a garage?
I.
And how were you dealing with snow because there's obviously not a driveway that gets you back?
I was in there the other day and I actually, because I broke my hand, so I'm, for the last three weeks I haven't been doing anything. But I had, drove my truck in there, if you saw the tracks on my backyard.
I saw some tracks, but it wasn't, it wasn't like there was a regular pathway.
No, it's not. I put my snow tires on there a week ago. I took my summer tires off, put my snow tires on. I go in and out with my snowmobile trailer or something like that, there'll, there'll be tracks there, but, I mean, I, I, if I go in there once a month, that's a lot.
Where is your business currently registered now? Last time we were here with you, your business.
My mail, my packages are shipped to my home address.
Okay.
My checks at my home address. I do, most of my work is all field work. If I do shop work, it's, I have a place on eight seventy-one Nepprehan Avenue that I use. It's not mine, I rented when I do a job for my friend.
Okay, you do have, um, one of your neighbors did send a letter, so I'm, I will read that into the record. Dated January eighth, two thousand thirteen, my neighbor John Schneider is on tonight's agenda regarding a variance request in support of not having to move his garage from its current location. Details of the request as taken from the website are included below. John Schneider, fourteen Pierce Hour Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a variance to be allowed to keep a nine hundred and sixty square foot fabric garage to be relocated so that it meets the required setbacks pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven C of the zoning ordinance. As a neighbor adjacent to John's property, I wanted to provide my support in granting the variance as I have no issues with the current location of the garage. While I wanted to be there in person to show my support, I have a previous engagement which will prevent me from doing so. Please accept this letter as my support of John's request. Thanks for your support in approving this on his behalf, Michael Summ.
He's, he's right next, he's my right next door neighbor.
Okay.
Like you just step over the property, it's, that's his.
Alright, so, um, and we know at the last meeting you, your neighbor across the street had come in, in favor of, as well, so I'm assuming, I'm not going to assume anything, you, you can speak at the, at your, you know, at the time.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, I have, that, he is on the right of me, this gentleman is straight across from me, the guy on the left of me.
Has a structure just like yours.
But he had, he didn't come tonight, but.
Right.
He doesn't have a problem with it. There's the one guy, I know who it is, and he sees, it's, it's, it's so far from the, his property, like, I, I don't even, I can't even understand why, what his problem is about it. I mean, yes, I've looked, I don't go on his property because I don't want to get arrested or whatever the problem is, but I've looked and I photographed it and in the dead of the winter, you see, you know, I don't know, ten.
No, I, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with.
Ten foot piece of it. And as far as the noise goes and all the, you, you, you guys drive by all the time, what, what do you see, what do you hear? You don't, there's, there's no way to have proof because there is no noise. If there's noise, it's coming from the place that's ten feet from my property line and it annoys me, but I know there's nothing that I can do about it because it's commercial property and there's no noise ordinance. But this guy, I don't know, he's, I, I met him once.
Is it, is it commercial property in right?
Well, he's right.
Right.
Pierce Hour was right, the next street up from Ryan Drive. It's all industrial.
Okay.
There's, there's all those, and now they've rented.
His property backs up too.
And the only thing that I can think of is that one building that's directly behind me was not in use for several, several years when I bought it. And in the past year or two, it is now occupied. And they have an exhaust fan that, whatever they do in there, I don't, I, I don't know what they do in there, but it's, you know, smoke comes out, it, it comes out, and of course, it's like, it could make me look guilty, you know, I mean, you know, the noise and everything else because my shed is here and you go, I don't know, maybe seventy feet and that's where the corner of their building is. And they make noise and they have, I mean, even on, I don't even know why there's kids playing there, but even on Sundays, you can hear the kids screeching and, and playing, it goes from one extreme to another. I mean.
When you draw there, yours, on your survey here, were you planning on shrinking this structure just to the point where it came within the setback?
I was trying to do that because.
Because that's what it sounds like you talked to the company about.
Yeah, I talked to them about that because it, it kind of got brought up about shrinking it. And I thought about shrinking it, if I shrank it eight feet this way, it would kill both birds and one stone. It would kill.
It would remove the setback.
The setback and it would also kill the square feet. But then it's going to become, it's going to be, it's going to be a lot uglier. I mean.
You can't cut the fabric.
No, they, you don't cut it, they said.
I know, you can't.
You just, you just fold it over like, you know, a badly wrapped Christmas present and it voids the warranty, I mean, I need the structure for another year, I mean.
And that's my confusion because.
Well, I, but, but the reason is, is I planned, I'm keeping it as far as long as I live there, but since all this has became, I've made other arrangements and I'm actually probably not even going to be living in Hopewell Junction anymore because it's just, I tried to put up a garage a couple of years ago and it was a hassle and it's just not worth the effort to, to try and do anything, so I'm, you know, I mean, I got a, a year to.
Yeah, but see, this is my thing, if you just let me talk.
Okay.
I don't know what you want. Frankly, don't know what you want and why you need it. No, you, you come in and asking for a variance, you haven't established that you need it, you say you have basically another shed that's empty now, you're going to tear that one down. Why, what is the hardship, what do you need? You, you go from one thing to the other.
Okay, that.
And I have no idea what you want and why you need it.
I need that one to store all my stuff in because it's got a good, dry floor. The other one has concrete, but it's all, I can't move, everything is heavy, so you need big machines to move everything. It has to be a flat surface.
John, can I ask you?
Sure, absolutely.
Let's have you come back again. Give us a floor plan, show us how you're going to use that space. Others, when they have come in and asked for a garage, have showed us why they need that space, say you have X number of vehicles or whatever it is, show us how are you going to use that space, alright?
Come up with a comprehensive plan for everything you have on it, all your sheds, what you need and why you need it and what your hardship is.
I mean, the dilemma is this town has no, no ordinance that prohibits, how many sheds, alright, which your property is an example of. You have three sheds on your property. Two sheds and a garage, if, if we approve this as a garage. It, it really is, when you look at that corner of, of your property, it's quite the little collaboration of structures.
I understand that. I don't like looking at it myself and I never would have done it if I'd have been able to put up the garage I wanted three years ago, but, I, I didn't want to do this, I don't, I didn't want to spend, that one was five thousand dollars and the other one was like twenty-two hundred. I didn't want to spend it, but I got to the point where I was.
You're going to put the garage on your property.
Excuse me?
We're going to put the garage on your property.
A regular garage, yes.
So you had an idea of setback requirements and all this stuff when you brought up the structure. See, okay.
I, I.
I suggest that you just follow what's being suggested to you, you come back with a floor plan, what you're going to use and why you need it.
You want a floor plan of the inside where I'm going to put each piece of.
And tell us exactly how many structures you're going to keep. If you're saying that you'll get rid of one of the other structures and just, if you're allowed to keep this one, then show us that. Show us why, how this property, how this structure will be used.
You want me to draw another floor plan?
Please.
Of the property.
Not another floor plan, I don't have a floor plan from you. All I have is a box drawn on a survey that shows where it is on your property or where you're proposing it to be on your property, alright?
So you want me to draw another one without the one shed there?
No.
Just that you explain, we want to know what you're going to use as.
What are you going to put in that structure, not of the property, but in the structure. Or structures, if you're going, I don't know if you're going to get rid of two other, the two sheds?
No, I just want to get rid of the, that one, but leave the wooden shed there.
Okay.
And take the one behind it down, the big one, because now I'm getting, you know, if I keep the big one, then I can keep everything in that one. I could take what's left in there and put it in that one, I could take that one down and then I'm going.
Show floor plans for what you're going to keep and what's going to be in there, how much you need.
Alright, I, I think that's the only way we're going to be able to understand really what you're, what you're really proposing to do here.
Well, I, I've, I've been trying to think ahead and have a plan and I've been getting rid of stuff, so I figured.
Part of the concern we have is, this looks like a welding shop, you're a welder.
Absolutely.
You have all your business address, your telephone number, everything goes to your residence.
Right.
Looks like you're running a business there.
Spit my number.
For both, you can't do it.
Yeah.
So justify to us why you want it and what it's going to be used for, because that's what we're going to prove it for. And if ever comes an indication you're using it for your business, yeah, you'll be shut down.
Right.
Okay, so justify your hardship, what you need, and then we can talk about this more intelligently. Because again, I have no real idea what you want.
Alright.
Okay.
We'll see you next month.
Sure.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, for next month?
Till next month?
Twelve February four.
Yes, please.
So.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that's it for our public hearings this evening, so now we're on our discussions or reviews. Item number three, appeal three six one five Hopewell Filling Station, Michael Gillespie, P E, representing Hopewell Filling Station, Route eighty-two and three seventy-six, Hopewell Junction is requesting a nineteen foot rear line variance to a proposed two thousand three hundred and seventy-four square foot commercial building, a twenty-five foot front line landscape buffer variance and a nine foot side and rear line landscape buffer variance pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations, section one ninety-four dash one sixteen B one and section one ninety-four one sixteen B two respectively. Good evening. Um, yeah, there are. Usually we turn off both just because it, that's how it works.
That helps.
Yeah, yep.
Stop with my glasses. I'm covering the bar, in case somebody hit this. Oh, well.
Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm here tonight before the board relative to a few area variances and, and as we kind of, as I roll through this, I want to make sure that we're absolutely, you're absolutely clear, because I kind of got absolutely clear about the variances that we need for this project, but let's, let's maybe start from the beginning. I assume everybody is fairly aware of the location of the project. We are right here in, in Hopewell, okay? We're right at the intersection of eighty-two and Route three seventy-six. On these plans, north is, is pointing up and you may be aware that actually, over the course of the last, I want to say really a year, year and a half, there's been some activity at the site, which also includes some remediation. The tanks were pulled, a new canopy was, was, was installed, new signage and so forth. And really largely that has to do with two things. Number one, there is a new property owner on, on, on the site, okay? In addition, the site, as well as a few others, not only in this town, some others, is part of the package purchase of, of a number of these stations by the owner. There were certain requirements, remediation requirements that were imposed by D E C. A number of these stations run a consent order and so forth. So, that being said, it was, it was immediate requirement to get those tanks cleaned up and, and move forward on, on the remediation portion of it. But it is now the, the applicant's intent to effectively construct a, a new building on the site, okay? And what we have is we, we currently have an active application before the planning board, okay? We, we actually have a public hearing scheduled for this for February fifth, beginning of February. The plan that you see in front of you, which I'll go into some of the details quickly, is, is something that was, again, worked with the planning board over the course of a few meetings, kind of looking at different, the size of the building and, and placing the building in different locations. So, so this is, this is effectively, again, after a number of, of iterations with the planning board, was felt that the best serves the site layout, site needs and so forth. Now, that being said, it's, it's a half acre site, okay? It's located within a B two zone, alright? And with that, um, it's, 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 it's a very tight site, okay? And as part of that, you'll, you'll notice that the building. On the left-hand side, the plane in front of you, as we have up here, the plane on the left-hand side, the purple kind of pop out in the middle, that's the existing building, which is about thirteen hundred square feet, okay? And what you'll see behind that is that the, the, the property is effectively kind of a pie shape, alright? And what we do is we have a lot of area behind the building which effectively is not used. One of the problems, or one of the large problems with this site was identified to board earlier on, is that access, ingress, egress, movement is tough. It's tough to get in, it's tough to get out, okay? Well, it's because it's in a hotspot, it's a lot of traffic counts and so forth in that area. So we, um, we are pursuing this, this project with regards to the planning board under what they call local law number four of two thousand twelve. And, and with that provision, it actually allows for a project to proceed, okay, that's under remediation, okay, without having to get involved in a new whole special permit and things such as that, okay? It was actually crafted in such a manner for this and some other stations in town, I think really just to kind of help spur and kind of clean up these sites and so forth. Now, one of the provisions of that law indicates that, you know, you may not meet, meet certain setback requirements, okay? The building as it exists out there now, the rear yard setback is thirteen point three feet. The rear yard setback required is twenty feet, okay? So we actually had done a couple of layouts holding that setback of thirteen point three feet. As this transpired and moved through the planning board, the talk was, well, what if we actually could move the building back in order to, again, open up the site? It's effectively a gateway spot in, in, in the, in the hamlet. And what it does largely too, from a, from a traffic standpoint, is if you take a look at the separation distance between the front of the building, you know, a little bit of area of concrete, and then you have the canopy and, 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 that's a very tight spot as it is out there today. By taking this building and pulling it back, okay, into the corner, what we do now is we provide for not only an area for some of the park, but allow for traffic, okay? And cars move through that spot much more freely, alright? I do want to mention quick too, is that at the last planning board meeting, there was a request, okay, to take a look at an option related to an additional access coming off of three seventy-six. The plans that were submitted and the plans you have tonight show an alternate one and an alternate two, okay? And I would think that's important only because it plays into our impervious coverage requirement. The plan that you see in front of you here, which is up on top of the board, is alternative two. two. And you'll see that there's a sweeping turning lane coming in off of 376. That was something that was suggested by the board, which made some sense because of really circulation related to deliveries, not only of gas, but as well as convenience store itself. All right? I show that because there's a slight bit more of an impervious area as part of this layout. This was, and I think I can go on record to say, this was preferable layout by the planning board, but our impervious jumps just a pair. So when proceeding with this board, one of the things that we're going to be looking for is a, a variance related to lock coverage. We want to make sure that we're being more conservative and less conservative. We are waiting to hear back from the D O.T. relative to that access point. Anyway, so what we've done is, we've taken this new building and in terms of the size of the building itself, we are permitted to expand the size of the building up to 50%. Okay? Now, in terms of that calculation, this is something that we went back and forth and got clarification during the process with the board, is our canopy actually counts as a structure. The existing building out there counts as a structure. You take those, you add those together, that gives you a square footage. Okay? What we're proposing with the existing canopy in the new building meets that requirement of the 50%. It's around 46, I want to say. So we're good. Okay? So, again, getting back to the fact that we're taking that building and we're pulling it back and opening up the, the site a bit, that spurs us into a couple of variances. Okay? The first one is the rear yard setback. While the physical edge of the wall would not be 1.8 feet from the property line, we did a calculation, this, this, this building here, which you see in front of you, we made one iteration with the ARB. This is, this is what's being proposed and we're not through them yet, but we're looking at it. The overhang is 1.8 feet. It's the furthest projection from the building to the property line. So we are at 1.8 feet. We would need an 18.2-foot variance to allow for that rear yard setback. When we push that building back, okay, there's areas that are obviously going to be covered now. They're going to be impervious than they weren't before. We're okay on the building coverage, but as you look at the overall lock coverage, right now, well, we're at 75% is what's required. We're proposing 82.2. And that includes a very small portion of that access drive. If we didn't have that access drive, we'd be at 82.1. So there's a variance of 7.2% there. Again, largely due to the modification and the movement of that building. The last one is the rear yard buffer. We need a 10-foot setback requirement. We need a 10-foot buffer requirement. This falls again into the fact that the building's being placed back. We have 1.8 feet there. So if you take the 10 minus 1.8, you know, you're at an 8.2-foot variance. So from a variance perspective, with regards to this core area variances, those are the, the variances as we see that we will be seeking from you on this project. So I think that, that kind of gives you an overall as to what's going on.
At the end of the day, what is it that you're trying to accomplish here? I mean, obviously the site got cleaned up with remediation with the new pumps, the new canopy. Is it now that you need to address this building? Is there, is it not large enough? Is it?
Well, there's also contamination under the existing building.
Oh, so that has to come. Okay. So you've got to be able to address that. And if you're addressing that, it makes sense. Let's take it down and then let's fix this site so it really works to the best it makes sense.
There has been remediation on.
That makes sense.
Yeah, there's been remediation on site. It's ongoing, there's ongoing monitoring, but as part of this too, that's, that is, that does play into it.
Okay. Does, does this station need to get closed again to do that remediation?
That's a matter of discussion as to what a temporary arrangement could be arranged. That's something the planning board has to.
Okay. My first, first impression is I like this. I mean, it makes.
It's much better than Mike did.
Much better flow of the property.
It's sort of a gateway, yeah.
I mean, I'll be honest, I don't like the right-in, right-out access on that one.
Up on 82 there?
Yeah, I don't like that one.
Why, you like taking a left out there?
No, I like, I pull in on that one. I actually, if I'm coming on, heading toward St. Columba, I would actually make that left in just because of the way my car where it needs to get filled, just so you know that.
But now you're going to have more room in the interior site to swing around.
I have, I have a diesel, so I can only use one pump on that site. I, I, I'm very limited by it.
Yeah, one, one of the things too, from an access standpoint. Because that's a really, a large part that's been.
Why not?
The access and, and the ability to move vehicles in and out of the site, through the site has been a big issue related to this. One of the things that we are doing is, is the access close further to the west, which is up near, further toward the intersection. There is going to be some improvements there to limit that to in and out rather than come out and taking a left there because I don't think many people do it anyway. It's just not very practical.
Yeah, I don't think many people do it anyway.
You know.
Different.
But people do do that left turn. I've seen it enough times.
Yeah. This, this will hopefully, there'll be some, you know, whether it's a painted island, whether it's a concrete island, we're still working with D O.T. on that, but there's going to be some limitations on there to prohibit that left-hand turn lane there.
All right, well, so the bottom line is of all the variances that you need, the front line landscape buffer, that, that, that's there anyway. I mean, that's, that's.
Well, here's.
You're not changing anything there.
What I did is I want to, we're kind of going back and forth. There are other non-conformities on this lot. The front yard landscape buffer.
Right.
The canopy, okay? My understanding, and maybe we can just get absolute clarification, is that under the provision of the local law number four, we're abs, we're actually not required to go through and, and get those all done. If the board feels that you want to do that, I don't think there's an issue. But those, those are existing now. What we're doing is, is we're actually non-conforming now and we're increasing the non-conformity. That's the reason why we're here. But because we, we don't meet those other provisions, we don't necessarily have to come here. I'll play it any way you want. If you want to clean those up, we can do that now. That's up to you.
Right, as Michael has pointed out, is that the town board did amend the zoning ordinance because the circumstances, we had two contaminated sites within the town. The buyer of the property was ready, willing and able with D E.C. to clean it up. In the case of the other site, they're actually going to bring a public water line under 52 to service some homes that have filter systems now because of the contamination. And the law does allow the non-conformities existing to continue. So he is correct when he says that and it wouldn't require action for that. The only reason why he's here is because he's going to worsen the non-conformity, if you will, in those locations.
And when I wrote my application, that was kind of a question, so that's why I had that in there. But I wanted to make it absolutely clear tonight.
Yeah.
And I'll rework the application so it's absolutely clear so when we advertise and it's crystal clear that we're willing.
No, that's fine. I think it's clear, but bottom line is though, you're not, some of these you need just because of the way the site's operating now, whether you do anything or not. Not that you need them because the local law, but, but there, you can never get them into compliance just because of the way the site operates now.
A 25-foot front yard landscape buffer would be tough.
And also the town, the town is, the town is cooperating too, is they're allowing an encroachment, if you will, into the sewer line easement.
Okay.
And you're going to have certain construction requirements there, but even to help push the building back that way because there's a sewer line that goes through there, the town's willing to work with them too to try to get the building back.
Okay, does he need that to be in place for us to take action or the planning board?
No, that's just, right.
Okay. That's fine.
That was the right-hand side. That's the, again, more of the reason why we completely stayed after the easement at one point on the layout. And then again, as this is moving along, we're actually, you know, coming a bit closer. We're 60 feet off the sewer line itself that we were asked to do. So that's, 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 again, this thing has been kind of pulling itself back into the corner bit by bit with each plant modification.
And they've also reduced the size of the original building that they proposed. So it's been a process.
You got to go high.
You don't know unless you ask.
So it's down from 5,000 square feet.
The only way you can say no is you got to ask for it.
Any comments or questions for board members?
When you have, you're, right now you only have two structures you mentioned. One was the, or you're proposing the canopy as well as the.
The store.
The, the convenience store. What about the monument for the sign? I mean, would that be a structure or is that something separate?
It's in the state right of way.
Okay.
The sign. They would have to get a permit for the sign, right? It's still in the state right of way.
Actually.
Or did you move it?
Yeah, the sign is okay as it is today. If we don't go, if we, hereabouts would be okay. I'm not interested in going for this access on 376. The, the sign will remain where it is. If it, if we go through this, it'll have to be relocated. It's back to the end of the drive. We show that as part of our ultimate.
So there are only basically three structures that are going to make a difference on the site. Other than.
When I say structures, I'm thinking two, canopy and building.
But that's still a structure.
Yeah. What's that?
That's still the sign, the monument, so it's a structure.
That's what they have up there. And the sign with the lowest.
That's the first I've heard of that.
I don't know. I think, you know, based on getting it cleaned up and like Mr. Gillespie indicated, I mean, that's something that the center of that town, when you come into East Fishville, I think we do to clean that up and make it look nice right against the village of Lotte Hamlet, we want to call it.
What, what does it abut on the other property, the Fishville National?
That's M&amp;T Bank.
M&amp;T now.
The drive-thru.
Right. But it, what, is it parking over there or is it just dead space over there? What is it over there?
They have a drive-through on that side, right?
You have the bottom purple building. Let's, that is M&amp;T Bank.
Right.
You have the drive-through right there and then you have a parking lot up here. Just so you understand too, we were actually before the ARB last week. And the ARB, while we're okay with, with everything, they had some concerns with regards to the buffering and landscaping along that line there. M&amp;T, we've done some things in town and they typically, some, no one ever shows up from M&amp;T Bank. Certified mailing goes up to Buffalo, they just, but I think as part of this too, there's a couple of scraggly looking pines along that length there and a couple of broken down fence that's actually on the M&amp;T property.
Okay.
The, the ARB had asked us to possibly reach out to someone there to see, you know, to clean, kind of clean that up. And, and we're going to do that. I assume they're not going to show up to the hearing if they do. That's great. But point being is, is we'll probably provide for likely some new landscaping, additional buffering along that length there.
So you are proposing to clean, to do something back there, just not necessarily on your property?
Right.
Okay. Assuming you can get permission to work to do it. Okay.
Are you doing any landscaping on the other side? I see there's a couple.
Those trees are there already, right?
There's some big trees that actually reside along the northeast part of property down there. The county department planning on a referral mentioned something about that. We are showing a, a new tree at the corner, pulling back some pavement at the, at the very top corner there. You know, we sent that back up to the county and we'll see what they have to say about that. There's not a whole lot of room there, but we are maintaining a 10-foot landscape buffer there. Where, where we did not maintain that along its entire length before. You can see the difference in the two plans in that front corner that we're shaving back with the pavement.
Are you making any changes to the pumps' location or, or the canopy?
There were some pretty major upgrades made to that when, when the new tanks.
That was a long time ago, dug up.
Yeah. It's a long time ago. All right, are we okay for public hearing for next month?
I'm. So that's my hope.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, so I have a motion to put this on for public hearing for next month.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll see you next month.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Mike, do you want to take you back? See you again next week. All right. And last but not least, I don't know.
Keep us awake here.
Appeal 3616, Barnum slash Keegan, Lori Barnum and Kevin Keegan, 75 West Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting an expansion of a non-conforming use in order to build an addition onto the side and rear of the dwelling and a 45-foot front line variance for an existing house and a 26-foot rear line variance for a pre-existing garage pursuant to Sections 194-121 and 194-123 respectively. Good evening.
Evening. My name is Jeffrey Bass. I'm an engineer representing Lori Barnum and Kevin Keegan.
Okay.
I think they submitted a letter indicating.
They did.
They couldn't be here tonight because of medical procedure that they have to deal with. I did make up, I don't think you have these, I did make up, I have five copies of the files.
That's fine.
That's here.
We can share.
Thank you.
Basically, I think you, you pretty much stated the gist of what we're looking for, that they're proposing to put a, an addition on their home, combination of a one-story addition, which would extend approximately 10 feet off the west end of the front section of the house or the left side, as you phrase it, from, from West Hook Road. The, the currently, maybe you already said this, but the, Madam Chairperson, but the front right corner is just under six feet from the property line.
Right.
At present, and they are seeking the 45-foot variance to, to bring the structure within the current setback requirement.
Let me just stop you for one second. We saw this property with an application not too long ago. This was the property where they were asking for a six-foot fence in their front yard coming down West Hook. This is the one where we had said if they put up some curtains, it would actually stop a lot of the glare coming in. So we did see this property not that long ago. They did withdraw that application. So, so now they're back. Now, when we understood then that this house clearly had some non-conforming issues, it's very, very close to, to West Hook Road.
So they're going to put up a whole addition to block the light? Is that what you're saying?
Since we didn't give them a fence, you know? So, so I mean, it's not their doing. We understand that. You know, that, that's certainly not, not an issue. So, so the only question would be, what are they actually proposing? I mean, why are we continuing, why is the addition coming to the front, I guess, as opposed to just being limited in the rear?
Well, as I understand it, and the plans aren't complete yet, but basically they have, their kitchen is on the left side of the house.
Okay.
And they would like, it's kind of small and it also has a quite a low ceiling. So they would like to expand that, the additional 10 feet to give them more living space in that kitchen. That's the.
I thought I understood that was where they watch TV. I think that's.
Basically, what's involved there.
Probably both. But you're not getting any closure to the road, that's for sure.
No.
No, it's actually runs away from slightly.
Right. No, that's fine. Any questions or comments for board members? Again, this is an older house. It's pre-existing. I certainly think, we do know that they certainly have an issue with, with glare coming in on that side. I would hope that they're not going to do something there that exacerbates that and, but maybe they can help limit how much, how much headlights come in on that side there. So, I have a motion to put this on for public hearing for next month. All in favor? We'll see you next month.
All right, very good. Thank you very much.
Motion for adjournment?
For a second. All in favor?